Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Harrisburg City Council Work Session. My name is Wanda R. D. Williams. I'm the Chair. And all of us city councilor members, today is Tuesday, November the sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one. I am now calling this meeting to order at five thirty P. M. Mr. Petrowski, please do the roll call.
Mr. Allen.
Present.
Ms. Bowers.
Present.
Ms. Daniels. Green.
Present.
Mr. Madison.
Here.
Majors. Ms. Williams.
Present. Thank you, Mr. Petrowski, and please note that Mr. Majors is excused today. We now will move on. Comments from the Chair? I don't have any comments this evening. I do have one particular new thing that I would like to bring up before we start our Public Safety Committee. I did talk with our Treasurer, Dan Miller, and I want to put it on record to the public that Mr. Miller said, effective December the first, he will be opening the Treasurer's office on Tuesdays and Wednesdays. And also that they will be accepting cash payments. Please, he noted that if you do come to pay your bill, please have a copy of your bill. It is tedious when they have to look up your bill. You may have three or four bills, especially landlords. So he's asking, please, to bring along your bills. And then from there, he will see if they're going to open up on a regular basis after January first. Thank you. I now will turn over comments to Mr. Allen, who will have a statement.
Thank you. First, no question. Have we do have a confirmation of what's going to come down next week by way of budget? Is that coming from Brian?
So I met with the mayor today about what the intentions are. What is going to come down is essentially last year's two bills. The Budget Bill and the related tax ordinance. If you recall, you you voted on an annual tax ordinance where the taxes expire December thirty-first. So there has to be a but that has to be a vote on that. The binder is not going to come down. And it's going to the the difference is it's going to basically say on this one that it's understood from the administration that this is a placeholder for the budget that reopens for twenty in the in the first month of next year.
And I understand there's been some discussion or disagreement on the the scope of which the incoming administration can propose the new budget based on that. Have we reviewed? Because I know back in two thousand thirteen, when Mayor Papenfus came in, he proposed an entirely new budget.
So, well, I'm not sure what you mean by there's a disagreement on the scope of a new budget.
There was some discussion on are we bound by that ten percent increase thing that was?
So in the spring, you and and anytime the budget comes down, so you'll be in that same, those are statutory. So when the council is reviewing a budget and the mayor presents a budget.
But if the mayor is presenting the budget, that those are not considered as similar actions.
No, it's not. It's not different from the budget that gets approved. It's a placeholder. It's it's a change in the budget that you receive in January because it's a total reopen of the budget.
Okay.
So that remember, there's one provision, if it's ten percent different, there's one if it's twenty-five percent different. But those same rules will apply to that process that would apply normally.
Okay. Just so I just want to make sure something is coming down in time for next Tuesday, just so we have.
Yes, my office is is bringing down, and I met with Brian an hour ago. And we will, you know, you will have the two ordinances down, but obviously in a very slim down format.
Okay. And then I just want to kind of further accentuate that apparently, from what I understand, the mayor has refused to be a part of this process, of which is somewhat concerning because the mayor is still the mayor until of what I believe until a new mayor takes office, correct?
He is the mayor through January third at noon or whatever time.
So this is just a further example of him further separating himself from his roles and responsibilities as mayor.
Well, I'm not going to comment on.
You don't have to. That's just the facts.
So. But I will, I can inquire if he wishes to come down, but my understanding was originally there wasn't going to be anything coming down because the law says if a council doesn't approve a budget in time, the existing budget remains the budget for the following year. So in that sense, there's always a budget as a matter of law. And I think that was the lens he was looking at.
Just wanted to kind of go on record, kind of one in the same that this has been a thoroughly disappointing end to a mayor's term in terms of the lack of both accessibility and his ability to stay in the role. Also further mentioned, my term is also ending, yet I'm still here. So that is all I have to say. I'll move on to the regular scheduled business.
Well, I concur with you as well. I think, you know, neglecting his duty as mayor, and he's being paid throughout the process, should be some concern of constituents who voted for him to be here. So I concur with everything Mr. Allen said, but I still think we need to look at why he's not being visible and also he's not taking care of the day-to-day operations that certainly is neglected because of the fact that we have now lost a business administrator as well as a engineer.
Well, for the public's sake, I will note all of the things that had to be signed on a day-to-day basis, purchase orders, the PFAs or the PFAS, PAFs, all of those are being executed by the mayor, which what Mark would have done and Bruce would have done before that.
Oh, he is coming into the building?
He is coming into the building.
I've seen him up in here seven times, seven different times.
I'm happy to sit down with both of you together.
He's not sitting down. You know that. You know he's not.
All right.
But anyway, we'll move on to Public Safety Committee. And now we'll turn it over to Ms. Green, who is the Public Safety Chair.
Thank you, President Williams. Mr. Petrowski, if you could read Bill thirteen into record.
For Bill thirteen of two thousand twenty-one is an ordinance amending Chapter three dash one forty-one Disabled Parking residential neighborhoods of Title III Public Safety Providing for Technical Amendment thereto regarding reserved disabled parking and providing for related technical amendments to the traffic code.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the administration here that would like to discuss this?
The Law Bureau will speak to this document. This technical amendment comes out of discussions and concerns raised by a group called the Disability Law Project, who are professional advocates for the rights of the disabled. Our ordinance did not reflect the ADA as it is written. It's been on the books a long time because both PennDOT and the ADA allow for placards, not just license plates, to be proof of your right to, and it's a PennDOT issued placard. The intention of this is simply to bring this ordinance into compliance with that language, and it makes changes where you see them underlined in Section three, one, four, three throughout and modest references in in the remainder of it. I will note that I have to, there was something inadvertently put in there by myself. There had been a prior determination after the ordinance from a complaint some years back that the ADA does not permit us to have a fee. So the lines that started, line seventy-four through seventy-nine, actually have to be stricken. So we always had the fee in the ordinance, but but we're just not allowed to do it. So it they stopped collecting that fee a long time ago. And so those sections have to be stricken, and the remaining subsections get relettered for D will become C and E will become D. But otherwise, it's purely as a technical amendment for compliance purposes with the commitment. This is start from a person's complaint. And the commitment was if we do this, you know, that we would not have to ask a judge to solve the problem.
All right. I don't have any questions at this moment. I will start with questions all the way down to my right with Councilwoman Daniels. I don't have any questions. Councilman Alat?
I probably have a dumb question. So what does this actually do?
It brings clear so that when you look at the city's code, if you have a placard from PennDOT, which you get what's that?
Like the PD license plate they're talking about?
No, the license plates are different. We always had the license plate.
Oh, that, okay.
Right. So the ours said you could have the license plate. The law says you had, you can have either.
Okay.
And so we weren't, our all our ordinance didn't say you can have either. It said you had to have the license plate.
Gotcha. Okay. Sorry for that. I just, as I'm reading through, I'm like, what am I actually?
Yeah, it's it's pretty, but in reality, we're giving it to people with placards.
Okay.
But.
Gotcha. That's all I had.
President Williams?
Yes, so now there there's a fee for this placard from the Department of Transportation. But the city of Harrisburg is not assessing a fee.
We are not allowed to assess a fee. That's the determination.
We were allowed to assess the fee before, but now that was determined.
It was quite a while ago it was determined. They stopped collecting that fee a long time ago, and just when we were redoing this, it wasn't really a focus of the discussion, and when we put it back in, this Law Project called us back and said, hey, you know, you guys took away the fee X number of years ago, long before I was here because it was not permitted.
So now issuing this permit to that individual for handicap parking. So we are not assessing a fee, but is that the individual's personal space that we're giving? Are we continuously putting handicap parking at the corner of?
As a matter of law, these are not personal spaces, and that's not Harrisburg. There's a PennDOT guidance for roadways that this comes out of.
But our roadways aren't Harris. They're not considered PennDOT roadways.
I I understand, but they're they're.
We need to be, we need to really kill that because we're putting parking spaces at the corners of a block that has ten houses on it. If that person lives at the eighth house in the corner from that that corner, and that what's what's the necessity for a handicap park?
I I understand all of the practical problems with this.
Why are we?
Because because we are deeply interwoven with PennDOT and the need for their assistance and funding and interaction for city streets, even though they're not all state streets. And I think what you'll really have to do is is when you have a new engineer who would be the liaison to PennDOT on these things, because I I don't know if you, when you get into it, PennDOT will withhold monies or not participate in certain grant opportunities that we can share. I mean, they do have levers for local governments to help us participate and then deny us participation. So it's worth a discussion, but and what I'm saying, but you have to have sort of a unified process for equal protection purposes so that 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 policy is uniform.
We're just talking about what the grants they provide us. They don't provide anything for errands, side streets, or even the majors, some of the major thoroughfare streets. Now, they're supposed to be Division Street is supposed to be very responsible. McClay Street still got nine or ten different cracks in the sidewalks in the street, so they're not even taking care of their responsibility. So but how can they regulate that we need to provide handicap parking spaces? And these people are in the middle of the block. So they don't need a handicap space because by the time they go from the corner of the block to their home, they're probably out of breath and can't make it. And then in the wintertime, there's snow. Our snowplows are plowed with snow at the corners. And if they're not plowed snow at the corners during the fall, all the leaves are ready to the corner. So it gives them that accessibility to be able to use the ramp for handicap. I just have a question, and I'm going to debate that, so.
I I understand, Madam President.
Thank you. That's all, Ms. Green.
Thank you, Councilwoman Madison.
No questions for me, thank you.
Councilwoman Bowers?
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Just to follow up to the question asked by President Williams, where we place the the handicap parking signs on a block when it's requested? Is that a matter of policy or a matter of law? Like, can we decide where we place them?
So it's been a matter of policy, but I think it's based on interactions with guidelines published by a PennDOT. They tell you how much linear feet of each side of the block and total parking spaces have and have a formula for how many spaces go in an area. And then this is about as imperfect a thing as there is because we all know that sometimes you need a handicap placard, not permanently, but because you had a condition that's going to take a year and a half to recover from, and you live in the middle of the block. So you're not going to be in a wheelchair. But I mean, it's an imperfect arrangement. It's worth revisiting, but it's based on, from my understanding, technical manuals out of PennDOT that we have commitments to comply with, which we've made on applications for funding that we would comply, just like we have commitments to federal compliance when we make applications for their money. And we assert that we will comply with, and they have a long list of statutes that we comply with. But this is really an engineering question at the end of the day. The question really isn't, can you do it differently? Is if you do it differently, will there be a consequence? And if there is, just you want to head that off with PennDOT before you dive in. It just is a matter of prudence.
I don't have any other questions at this time. Anyone else has any questions?
Yeah, but you're saying it's commitments to comply. So it seems like Harrisburg is the only one has to be has to be committed.
I I came from Philly originally. They have changed dramatically what they do.
Understand it's a first-class city. I understand that.
No, no, I'm saying, I think it's also because of PennDOT. They dramatically have changed the way they mark the streets. At.
Now, I've been I've been several cities within the last two or three years. And I don't see the same regulation being applied as Harrisburg. That's why I have a question about that.
I think it's worth having a discussion with both the Disability Law Project, with PennDOT, with the with the local group that has encouraged us to add the disability basis. I will note that we had received from the Federal Highway Administration Civil Rights Office a complaint about one of our intersections that's been going on for a long time. We're trying to settle about it doesn't comply. And, you know, those things, the big intersections are very expensive to fix and are very complicated. I mean, so a lot of people have their hand in this particular operational issue. And frankly, it's a lot of it's a negotiation.
Certainly something I would be looking into.
I think if you focus on it, you can change it. That's right.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Green. That's all.
All right. Any other questions? If there are no other questions, I think that's something we can continue to discussion about. That particular part of it is where, you know, where the handicap signs go and how we can amend things in the future, but as for this piece, I will recommend it to go on our next legislative agenda.
With the amendment we're going to send for striking out the one provision?
Yes, removing line seventy-four through seventy-nine, I believe you said, and updating the the lines and the letters and numbers to comply.
Thank you.
Yes. All right. Mr. Petrowski, if you could read Bill fifteen into record.
Bill fifteen of two thousand twenty-one is an ordinance updating Chapter two dash seven oh seven of the notified ordinances of the city of Harrisburg, governing the police retirement system to provide technical amendments and incorporate the methodology where calculating final salary to assure compliance with certain internal revenue service requirements for governmental pension plans.
Thank you. And then is there anyone from the administration here to represent this piece of legislation?
We have outside counsel Renee Lu, who apologizes, but she had a pre-scheduled conflict. She was attorney at McNeese Wallace, which was the respondent to the Police Pension Board, RFP, for services to review the pension ordinance, the pension plan and our compliance. I can give you how we got here. When we negotiated the last new police contract, it became clear that the language in the city ordinance no longer mirrored the third-class city code because it had been updated, particularly regarding police pensions, and the formulas actually were stated in a different format. So it was a recommendation that we get tax council to look and see whether we were compliant. The tax council did that analysis and determined we were not compliant. That no actual violations of the tax code had happened, but they were allowed under the language as it existed, so made a series of recommendations for technical changes. Part two of that was this council, at the request of the mayor, and this also split out of the police contract negotiations, approved a form of a contract for managers for retention, which is normally is on a management contract of any type. And so there are three of those contracts with police management officials. We had the same firm analyze the tax consequences of how to fulfill that contract. So basically, if you were leaving, you, in order to stay, you were going to give up a benefit for you and your family for the next, whatever, twenty-five years on how the there were some bonus provisions in the pension if you left within a certain period of time. The contract allowed them to continue those for as an incentive for managers to stay, and we have been consistently in the position where all police managers basically are eligible to retire at any time. And that's 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 one of the realities we have. So one has retired, two others are still eligible to retire. There were two ways to do this under a section of the tax code. One of it was to fund the entire thing upfront out of general tax dollars because you have to lock it in and have a separate account for it. The other was to do it through the pension plan. Every year, the city, in addition to the contributions of its members, contributes the entire MMO, which is the money we get from the Commonwealth, to meet the rest of the funding for the police pension plan. And we actually are obligated by statute to meet any gaps that happen in the funding of the pension plan with with hard tax dollars. So in terms of the total cost to taxpayers, it was a much more prudent approach is to add is to the ordinance. The ordinances are the subject for the mayor and the council to approve. I will tell you, which I've mentioned to the council president and to the chairwoman, the police union, for whatever reasons, are unhappy with that determination. They believe it violates a uniformity clause. We believe the uniformity clause of the IRS code is what applies. There's a stricted uniformity clause under state law that was repealed. They haven't stated a different one to us. I suspect a judge will have to sort the question out at some point in time. But, you know, but it's up to the council and the and the mayor whether what goes into the ordinance. It's not up to the board or up to the employees. So our our recommendation is in the best interest of the taxpayers to do to comply with the recommendation we got from McNeese on how to fix this. And and we will deal with the disagreement like you deal with disagreements. You know, we'll let a neutral person decide that at some point.
Right. I've I've got a couple of questions and I guess kind of concerns. Ask a few, then I'll I'll open it up to to my fellow councilmembers to be able to ask. And here I I see that it does kind of give the mayor's office some discretion is as far as like choosing who gets this increase. How did how did we get to that?
So that is the resolution council passed was as a retention and promotion into management. Not necessarily every officer's needs would be the same. So there was a form of a contract approved. But essentially, it's the same for all three. All three have had the same exact thing. But that discretion was to, because the mayor signs all kinds of contracts, you know, as he does. And it was simply a contract with this limited purpose of retention and not losing a benefit. That was the stated purpose in the resolution. This simply reflects what was in there.
Okay. I'll open it up to my councilmembers before I finish asking questions. I'll start to my left here with Councilwoman Bowers.
I don't have any questions immediately. Thanks.
I will go to my immediate right with Councilwoman Madison.
Uh, no questions at this moment.
President Williams?
Yeah, I don't know. I I'm considering whether or not we should do this because I don't think it's across the board, and I certainly don't think it's transferred. So I'm going to be a no vote on this, and I ask that we look at certain lines in this particular document of this bill and strike it out. Because if you're going to do something, it should be collectively across the board, and I don't think it is.
But I will note there's a consequence to that, which in the city will then fund directly on the front end the contracts that the council had approved being entered into with hard tax dollars. That'll be the other way it goes. And
That can be negotiated.
That's a contract.
It can be negotiated.
I'm telling you where we stand today, so.
All right. Sorry, as I jump right in. As I know it's my turn, I'm sorry. So, all right. So you mentioned the uniformity clause, and I realize that that might, from a legal perspective, apply to this, but I kind of want to build on that.
So they're not talking about the uniformity clause of the tax code that is.
No, I know. I get that, but I, but going on that uniformity, it got me thinking about like putting something so discretionary on one person. How do we set a standard for that that would would be fair? Like, if if we're just leaving too much discretion of a mayor to say, and I would say this about anyone sitting with it, you know, want to sit over there, Eric, whoever in the past, like, you know, I always have a fear of giving one person in a situation like this, where we are so contractually obligated for so many things, discretion to do any number of these things, not in the similar fashion that we would apply that same standard with. Like, I would almost say that if we were going to do this, that there should be a calculation of which we would determine this and how we would do it that would be stated publicly and contractually. I might be more comfortable with something like that, but it leaves too much.
Which language are you concerned about? Because I think there's an unintended consequence.
Well, that's what I'm saying. If maybe that is, but maybe that could be tightened up, and that might be the question for McNeese Wallace on this, is that such member as designated by the office of mayor.
What line are you on?
I'm on, looking at section eighty-two to eighty-nine specifically.
Okay.
So if I'm reading this correctly, it gives the office of the mayor discretion to make a determination whether it be the base wage or the amount that they'd pay out, correct?
No, so so they can't, it can't violate the pension plan. It can't. That's why it's an ordinance. You create, you create the pieces.
But what is the, that explained to me the discretion that occurs. That's what I'm trying to zero, and I'm not, it, the way that I read it, it just seems like a mayor has authority to make a determination there that I'm not sure that I concur unless it's being, unless the same standard is being applied. So maybe explain if I'm if I'm missing something.
So the only different standard would be applied is that if they had retired on the countdown of the transfer of the contract, they would get a ten percent bump in their pension versus seventy-five hundred dollar bump, which comes down to not a huge number on a given year, but over the life of the contract. So that is the only thing. And so you look at the contract form you already approved. It's not, it's not a blanket discretion form contract.
Right, but how is that, how is that determined? Like, the member, who is, who is this?
It's management, police, and there were two things discussed, and only one of them got done. One was to retain management so they didn't retire. And because and the incentive to retire was they were going to lose a benefit.
So hence why the union would want it because this creates a separate process for management over them, correct?
So no, literally, I'm going to tell you, this came at the cabinet table with the members and the leadership of the union sitting there. This concern is they're the ones who pushed and said wages are in the contract, salaries are not. If you want to cap things, you will have to do something different for the managers. Managers, as a matter of law, are a member of the police union pension plan, just like managers here.
Treated the same way that rank and file would have been treated.
Right. And then and then, but there is discretion, as was voted on, to retain them. You can have a retention program. The retention program does not mean it's not, so uniformity is sort of a concept pulled out of air. And I'm I'm, a judge would agree with us. I'm going to tell you, that's our conclusion, that this is, this is just not what they think it is. And I think it is something other than it is.
So if that is, if that truly is the case, then, because this is, this is confusing to me, and I can, I do a lot of contracts. So like, if I'm sitting here as rank file, like, if there needs to be further explanation or further discussion on this, because it just, it seems to me that we're creating a separate standard that I'm not sure that we want to create or go down that path that could be something that could lead us to too much.
So first consequence is is the person who retired in February of two thousand twenty-one, who the deputy chief, if the if the tax changes aren't approved by December thirty-first, and the city is contractually obligated to fully fund that on the front end.
So in this example, so if we don't pass this, he would get paid what?
I can't do the calculation here. We would have to fully fund the alternative secondary check that he would get for the remainder of his retirement.
Yeah, maybe that's what we need to see. Is so like, if essence, what actually?
Renee could speak to this, by the way, much better than I can.
No, I agree, but that's like, I I just want to, again, if if we're going to move forward with this, everyone really needs to understand what we what we're doing and how we're changing this because right in the way I'm reading it and from what I'm hearing, you know, both before coming in tonight and and such as that, there there seems to be too much of a too much, we don't remember, too much discretion applied to one office to be able to do this. I want to understand it. So I would like, if we could get calculations, show a table, show how that would work out, give an example. And that might be helpful.
Right. And there and there were, there were presentations given to the pension board on both, you know, with a full report that came from council in writing. I will get you those first. And, you know, and I can get Renee in here to talk to you guys.
Because I would say I'd I'd like to see that more before we act on this. I just, again, reading this is not, it doesn't give me a lot of like, and I would say that, like I said, I would say that with any administration, I'm not trying to single one out over the others, just trying to make sure that whatever we do, we're creating.
Right. And remember, this was done to solve a very particular problem.
Oh, I get, I get it.
And I mentioned the second part that didn't take place is the mayor did not enter to agreements with people that took the promotion. Like, they left the rank and file to become captains. And they are now management, and at the moment, they don't have that protection. But their their retirement window is the same as the seventy-five hundred that everyone else would get.
And just to understand the timeline of this, this is something that we had before, it has has to be passed by the end of this year, right? So I would say we have a little bit, well, we don't have much time, but between now and the next work session, we need to figure.
Sure. And happy to work through it. And I'll I'll be frank with you because, you know, I'm used to dealing with the both union issues and the legal issues. I got a notice when I pointed out they sent me a repealed law. The answer I got back in writing was, well, we'll sue you if it gets adopted. And I gave a substantive response to that, and I've never got a word back again. So I gave a substantive legal response to, you sent me something that is repealed. And instead of saying, no, this is why we're right, I got nothing. So.
I mean, that's just my, I don't know, I only speak for me on this, but I think getting some. but I think getting some, just an revision, seeing example, maybe a table of a calculation of how this would actually play out, if we see that, maybe that might be helpful for us to...
And we need to see the advantage that is given to some officers who did retire earlier this year. And that's great to have that document to do a comparative study. Because just what you're saying and other people are saying, no. I'm just not in agreement that it covers everyone. I think some people...
So, if you look at the pension plans, not every member of the pension plan gets the exact same thing.
We already know that.
That's what I'm saying, so, so the...
That's anywhere you go, we already know that.
No, what I'm saying, so the, the argument is...
But this looks like the mayor gave the advantage that some people and others did not have that same advantage.
I, I would respectfully disagree.
That's what I'm asking for.
That's why we're asking you for that information.
Yeah, I will get you the reports.
Because you're disagreeing, and we want to see, and why you disagree. Prove to us why you disagree.
Sure, I will get, I will get you what you need, so.
That's all I have, thank you.
Councilwoman Daniels?
I just want to clarify, this is for the management folks, these are the folks for outside of the CBA.
Right.
And, okay. And I think a lot of the questions that my fellow councilmembers asked are probably answered in the audio from when we approved the initial bill, talking about...
It's a resolution that's referenced in this in twenty-twenty.
Yes, a lot of those questions were already answered. So, I just, so I think, I just wanted to make sure that it was just, just the, that category, people outside of the CBA, but still within...
Well, based on what council had passed, although something else could come down the pike later, you still have the same problem with, you know, people taking management spots. I mean, this is, the city's going to have this problem, and you have to find a way to incentivize them to either step into management or, if management, not to leave. You've got to find some way to do that, where they don't get less because they're a manager. And that is, you know, and that's not just our problem, that kind of problem is all over.
But, that's the only question I have.
Any other questions? I think it'd be best for us to hold off until we get the answers to some of the questions that were asked tonight, such as the cost of funding this upfront and the advantages that officers that would have retired this year or before, earlier this year, what advantages they might have gotten with this plan. And then, I think maybe us taking the time to read over Resolution sixty-eight again and some of the things that are included in there. And then, just a question that I have is, why wasn't this done with Resolution sixty-eight? Why was it brought down separately?
Because Resolution sixty-eight was based on the contract, the contract was adopted, the CBA, under Act forty-four, which is what governs the pension plan. They had to do an RFP for professional services, so the whole, it was a whole process that had to happen. And then, it was that that resulted in the writing of this in the, you know, so they're two different track things. When we originally did that, we didn't know which bucket this would go into, whether it would go into as a part of the pension plan or under a different part of the tax code. And that was why we had tax professionals come in to do the announcements.
I would like to move this to our next workshop agenda so that we can continue to discuss it. I think that will be November thirtieth. And if we could get McNeese Wallace here, that'd be awesome, that we could ask them some of these questions directly. And if we can get those answers that we asked for, by then, that'd be awesome as well.
We will, we will get you everything we can get you.
December seventh? All right. And that is all I have, unless there are further questions. And in that case, if not, I will turn it back over to President Williams.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Now, the questions, I'm going to move on with a public comment. At this time, anyone who would like to speak, please do so. I'll start with my right, please come to the mic now.
Good evening, Council. Pam Parsons, Holly Street. I would just like to preface my remarks by telling you all that I, that I recognize, and that most people in the city recognize, that your work on council is not a full-time job, that all of you have lives and jobs outside of council. And so, what some of us who come here regularly try to do is try to help you with your job by bringing to you things that you might have missed or that you don't have time to do, and that we see it more as a partnership. So, I'd like to give you just a report on last week's environmental justice walkthrough. And I believe there will be a written report of some sort coming to you from Rafika Mohammed. We met last Wednesday, the tenth, and the folks who came to the meeting included some people from the state, from DEP, from the Attorney General's Office, also the county was represented, Capital Region Water, Adam Mouse, developer of the Hudson Building at Sixth and McClay, and also a number of residents. We did a walkthrough of the neighborhood around Sixth and McClay, on particular Fourth Street, and then also back behind the Hudson Building. We identified several dump sites. Some of those had private owners, including one owner who lives in the Bronx. And some of them are owned by the Housing Authority and the Redevelopment Authority. There's a variety of items that are dumped there. Some is obviously household trash, things like refrigerators and televisions. Others are clearly construction materials, housing, housing building materials, and then also like sand and dirt and things like that. The one lot is now fenced, but until very recently, there were children playing on it. We also don't really know what's inside some of those piles. There could potentially be asbestos, other chemicals, and hazardous waste. And we also noticed at construction sites on Sixth Street that there are no berms to keep things from going into the stormwater, and none of the stormwater inlets, also known as storm drains, were covered. So, our next steps from this are to, there are a number of people who are filing complaints, both on a state and federal level. There are other folks who have agreed to research owners, property owners. Hallers was another thing that I decided to look at. We found out that to haul waste in the city, you have to be registered. So, we're looking into that. People are checking demolition permits and building permits, checking regulations. And that might be what's available on the city's website is perhaps, and also perhaps filing right-to-know requests. And over the weekend, I know that there were folks who were out in other neighborhoods in the city identifying other dumping sites, several on the hill came to light, and taking photos of those, noting the addresses, and looking at the property owners. So, just wanted to fill you in on the work that has been done in the past week, and this will be ongoing, and there will be residents who will be reporting back to you as we go forward about what is happening with those dump sites. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone in the middle? Anyone to my left?
Hello there? Can you hear me?
Yes.
I submitted some written comments. I know, I think you're not really taking written comments by email anymore, although you were previously. Anyway, I'm just going to read you what I also sent you by email. Last week on November twelfth, the Tactical Response Team was dispatched to respond to a mental health crisis on the twelve-hundred block of Mulberry Street. There were pictures in the Penn Live article that depicted a group of heavily militarized officers in fatigues and helmets, and there was an armored vehicle. The article notes that the woman inside was having a mental health crisis, wouldn't come out of the house. She was armed with a cutting instrument. Last year, you all approved a significant increase in funding for the police department, and we were promised through a variety of things, quote unquote, softer policing, including this community policing division and a partnership with the county for two co-responders who would be trained to respond to mental health crises. More recently, on September first, Mayor Popenfus had a press conference announcing Anna White as the new head of the community policing division, and there was a whole lot of talk during that about trauma-informed processes. So, I would like to know, how did a person in crisis with a cutting instrument necessitate such a terrifyingly militarized response? Where were the co-responders during the incident? Who made the decision to call the county's tactical response team? Does the mayor or the community policing division consider this response to be trauma-informed? It's dangerous and unacceptable for the city to respond to mental health crises in this way. I've also, I've just learned that the police department has finally provided quarterly reports on use of force incidents back to twenty-sixteen, and I want to thank members of the council and community members who pushed for that level of transparency. But I would also like to point out that the police department is not currently on the list of municipalities who are submitting use of force incidents to the FBI, which has started, you know, conglomerating those incidents. And that is a thing that we could be doing. And lastly, the council's, the calendar on your website doesn't have anything at all populated for November to be a little bit of doing to figure out when your, when your next meeting was and to find your agenda. If that would be possible to get that populated, I think that would be helpful. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Here none. Motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, meeting's adjourned.